Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of June 11th, 2025, of the Board of Supervisors to order. At this time, please join us in a moment of silence for anything you choose to think Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Please state your name and where you live.
Edward Merriman, Newtown Walk. I just, I wanted to get reconfirmation from you guys that the sewer is finally dead. I know it's been talked a lot about. I know there've been conversations here, other places, and I'm just looking for some confirmation that you guys are not going to vote and not allow the sewer to happen.
We don't give answers and questions to questions here normally, but we'll certainly take it into consideration and give you the answer you're looking for at any other time. We just can't do it right now.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay?
Madam Chair, if possible, can I ask, maybe the township manager has some additional information on the sewer plant issue that he can...
That would be fine.
Okay.
Well, as the board recalls, we issued a letter to the Sewer Authority saying that the township vehemently opposes any construction of the sewer plant. For the sewer plant to even happen would require this board to authorize the township engineer to amend the Act 537 plan to include a sewage treatment plan. So until this board does that, there's no forward progress with the project as it is now.
So if you got that, that's your answer. Okay. Anybody else?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Bill DeSalvo. I live across the street at the Lancy Court for Franklin Circle. Last year, I came to one of these meetings to talk about the stretch of State Road 413, also known as Durham Road, from Stuville to the bypass of the really bad condition. And I asked if you could maybe get involved in it to do something to get it fixed, and obviously, it didn't happen. The condition has gotten worse, and so I called up PennDOT on Monday, and they gave me the phone number of the district office to tell them about the problem, which is we're in District Number Six. So here's what I told them. I want to report an overall bad, overall section of State Road 413, also known as Durham Road, in Newtown, Pennsylvania, from Stuville to the Newtown bypass, which had bad potholes and broken pavement along the entire stretch. The two most bad conditions are as follows. Going south on Stuville Road, there is a section just past Wright's Road on the right side, with the pavement as broken up. If you were to go there and hit your car there, and you're a small car, you're most likely going to be in trouble. Then when you go further south, as you approach the bypass, the road turns to the right, and there are broken parts of the highway, both on the right and on the left. When you're trying to make it so you're in between, it's a squeeze job, right? If you're a big car, I have an SUV, I can't really hit, I'm going to hit something, there's no way to avoid. If you're a small car, you didn't realize that was the condition, you could lose control, I told them, and then you could possibly get into an accident, and possibly, there would be a fatality. So, and also I added, you cannot just patch this thing, because they've been patching and patching it. You have to cut it out and repave it. So the next question, I said, when are you going to repave that stretch of the road? Back when I moved here from Southern California, back about 14 years ago, I asked the question, when are you going to repave it? They said, well, it was on the books to be done, like, six years ago. If you had had six years to all, it's like 20 years. That means that we've been living with that stretch of the road for 20 years, and it's getting bad. Now, if we want to wait until somebody gets killed, fine. Then if somebody gets killed, we'll go to the funeral and say, we'll see you in the next world. I think we've got to do something. Now, I did write this up, and they claim they're going to follow up. I got a follow-up email. Thank you very much. They're going to look into it. I'm asking the board that you have more influence than an individual like me, and caring about the township and the fact that we constantly use this road. And then with the addition of additional traffic due to the other development, plus the possibility of doing that medical center and the daycare place, it's only going to get more traffic, more possibility of somebody dying. Please get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will take that under consideration, trust me.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Joseph White, 220 Washington Ave, Newtown Borough. I just recently been, it's been brought to my attention about the sewer plant, and I have some concerns about what seems to be the way that it's maybe talked about or not talked about. I work during the day, you know, Monday through Friday, nine to five, like most people do. And the sewer plant is probably one of the biggest things that I can think of that's come along since I can remember being here. I've been here for about 17 years. I'm curious as to why it's not, the meetings aren't held in the evening, when people can actually attend.
You need to bring that up with the sewer.
Well, I can't, I can't do that. I work during the day, so this is the only time I can...
This is the Board of Supervisors.
Right. Well, are you on the sewer board?
Yes, but I'm only one person.
Okay. Well, maybe you could answer my question.
Hold on, hold on. One more time.
I'm the most junior member of the authority at this time, so to my knowledge, it's been done like that for X amount of years, like, since the, maybe the 80s, maybe even the 70s, I don't know. But there's never been a mind to change it, so I doubt it's going to happen now.
Has there been a project this, of this magnitude, that's come along?
What project?
The sewer plant.
There is no sewer plant.
Mr. Manager, could you repeat what you said a little bit earlier about the sewer plant?
Sure. For anything to happen, moving the sewer plant project forward would require this board to authorize their engineer to amend the Act 537 plan. Until that happens, there's no project.
Okay. So is there, is there some, because my understanding is there's a stop-work order, but that doesn't necessarily kill it. Is that true, or am I incorrect?
I don't really want to get into this, because this shouldn't be a back-and-forth. But it's going through the courts at a certain level that we cannot do anything about, so we have to wait for that process to end. And the one thing I can tell you is there will not be a sewer plant there. Of that, I can tell you 100%.
All right.
I don't know what's going to be there. Something will eventually.
All right. One more point, too. If it does ever possibly happen, and we don't know, maybe it's just...
We do know.
Okay. I would like for there to be a referendum that everybody could vote on. Just, that would be my, my last point.
There won't be a referendum, because there is no, there's nothing up for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello. My name's Danielle Teta. I live at 6 Devon Road in New Haven. Lower Dollington is an eyesore to me, since you installed all the stop signs.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you. Lower Dollington is an eyesore to me. I hate driving on it, and it makes me crazy with all the stop signs, how much wear and tear I have on my car, the guardrail that's next to the road that is supposed to help the walkers. It's literally six inches off the road. I almost got pushed over. Is that funny?
No.
Well, you're laughing.
It was moved, because that's what the engineers specified.
So it should be, that person in that lane can't move over if a car's moving into their lane? Because that's what happened to me.
Well, the guardrail's there to prevent accidents happening to pedestrians walking on the trail.
Has anybody been hit on that road? I've lived here 30-plus years.
That doesn't mean it can't happen.
Okay. Then we'll go into the signage. Did you get a discount on signs? Is that why there's 45 of them on that road?
I don't, I don't know who passed that, who, I mean, we are the ones that realized that there needed to be slowdown points.
A yield would be nice. I mean, I remember when the Frost Lane stop sign went in. It annoyed me, but I'm fine. I'm not fine with stopping three times before getting down to the hill. I have an SUV, and it does put wear and tear on our cars. But the signage, it just looks like I live in Levittown. I'm sorry. I don't like all those signs. They're red, and they're day glow. A stop sign that shows a stop sign coming up in five feet, it just makes zero sense. So I'd like somehow to do, somebody to look at it and say, this does not look right. Because it used to be a lovely road to drive down. Now, it's just, let me go through Woods of Saxony, let me go down another way, so I don't have to drive on that road, which is a shame.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Seeing, oh, okay.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Dana Rivera. I am a Middletown resident, and I am here because it was to my understanding that the sewer plant is not dead until it is officially sold. So whoever comes on to this new board, or you're filling in a couple of seats, I just want to make it very, very clear that this is not a good idea for all of us. We are neighboring communities, and I happen to live in Swan Point, and I utilize the NAC, and it's a gem for a lot of us here in the Newtown, Middletown area. And if this comes about, we are putting toxics stuff in our air. It's going to go into our HVAC system, all of those people who utilize the gym and so forth, and our parks, Lake Luxembourg, Core Creek. I was here about a few months ago, and we had a lot of the testimony that was being brought up with experts who worked for the Department of Environmental Sciences and so forth in Trenton, and they mentioned how bad this is. You also have schools in the Nishamni School District, that they just built that Core Creek Park for their children. Why would we want this? This would devalue all of us.
I'd like to, I'd just like to say, as you've heard our township managers say at least twice now, every single member of this Board of Supervisors would have to sign something of Act 532 that said that we were for this. Can I just take a poll right here? How many supervisors would sign that? Are there any?
Well, technically, only three would have to sign it.
Okay. Are there any? I don't see any hands of anybody that will sign that.
I just wanted clarity, because I'm a bit confused. I'm a bit confused.
Well, you don't have to be confused.
Well, so this is what I want, I heard that that plant wasn't completely dead.
I'm sorry you heard wrong.
So it is. So you're saying that it's a non-issue?
I don't know how many, if you want me to say it backwards.
Okay. Well, that would be wonderful news. That's wonderful news.
Yes.
That, yeah, okay. Well, that is, we should all be applauding. Thank you. Thank you. We trust your word on that.
You can.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion for the next meeting? If we could have the Sewer Authority Manager, Mr., I believe, Mike Mandito, come up to that podium on the TV and reassure the public that this is not going to happen. As far as the ownership of the property, I think that the holdup is a prominent businessman in the Newtown area who is having a disagreement with the, is it the Kushner Organization that wanted to build apartments there? So as far as the financial aspect, it's not in our hands, but as far as declining, the sewer plant, that is in our hands. We're the final decision, and from what I gather, the final decision is no, but maybe Mr. Mandito could come up to that podium and finally put this to rest.
If that is called for, I'm sure Mike will be able to do that. To tell you the truth, I don't, I don't know why, but we can certainly do it, but you can hear from all of us that we are not for it. So if you want to hear from the manager, we can do that, too. He's going to say the exact same thing. So I, you know, I don't know what it's going to take, that, as I said, the land is in court right now, so there's nothing that can be done. The first thing we would have to do is offer the land back to the person that had it, or in this case, it's not just a person, but it's a person and another company. They have indicated they don't want that back at this time, so we don't know what's going to happen, but right now, it's stuck in the courts.
They don't want it back? Because it's...
Okay.
I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry we can't have a back-and-forth. My mistake.
Is that the microphone anywhere?
Nobody's at the microphone. You're right. Yes. Okay. So is there any other public comment that has anything to do with anything other than the sewer plant, which I hope you now see that it's not being built? So is anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jagdish Patel, and I do live in Newtown for the last 23 years. It was a brand-new development where I live. In 2003 started, it's called Wilshire Walk, and it's a beautiful development, and you're talking about this sewer tank just very neighbor and close to that development. And we're thinking about our environmental for our children, our grandchildren, and like that, plus all this inflation that is skyrocketing all the time. Like presently, I talked to Brian Fitzpatrick about the sewer bill that skyrocketing, said it suddenly started more than double even, just suddenly. So like, guy like me, that retired person, living since last 23 years in Newtown, never see this type of skyrocketing sewer bill. What are we all must say? What's wrong with this sewer bill, you know? And why so double, more than double? That's not right. So I called, I contacted to Brian Fitzpatrick, Congressman, and he said, I'm working with that. I contacted him long time ago. I don't know what he did, but he just told me that he's working, his office is working with that. So I think personally, that when I see that sewer tank spot really close to that, my development, and we're thinking about the environmental, that close to that development, plus is the beauty of that development, probably is ruin for our children and grandchildren, and for the all-future generation. That's my concern. So I think the tank, sewer tank, is not necessary there. I'm, like I said, I'm living since 23 years in this development, since it started, at present sewer line, we have no problem. So why suddenly creating a new tank? What's the reason? And getting double price and more than double price, that's, that's wasting the money as well as making dirty environmental to everything, you know? So just think about, you know, for people or situation, that's, if it's not necessary, it's not necessary. You know? Why we wasted for this unnecessary and changing from good thing to bad thing? That's not real thing. Plus, all this inflation I said, you know, all taxes, this and that, is on our head, you know? And we, so many people nowadays is very hardship, you know? So that's why my request, if it's not necessary, that sewer tank, you don't think about. You know, the present system that we flush is running fine. And like I said, it's running in my house for the last 23 years. I'm the first owner of that house in that development. I have no problem. I never have problem. So why am I creating problems?
Thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate your thoughts. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to our, the rest of our agenda, which is reports of committees, boards, and commissions. We have no committees reporting, so I will start with my chairperson report. What I want to say is, June 14th is a day to come out with your community and symbolically and peacefully tell your elected leaders how you feel about the immigration activities that are happening around that you might or might not be so fond of. I personally am not fond of it. I'm not talking about the rest of us. I'm talking about me. This is my report. So please, if you are partaking in any of the activities on the 14th, please do so peacefully and non-violently, and with no destruction of property or person. That's what I have to say. Mr. Vice Chair?
Good evening, everyone. Last Thursday, I attended the jointure meeting. We talked about several issues. I just want to quickly, quickly briefly outline that a couple of issues were passed on to be advertised and adopted. One is the electric vehicle charging stations. The regulations for those should be advertised, authorized and advertised, I believe, early July, and then we'll all have a vote on that. Another is the zoning hearing board provisions. It's basically reordering the definitions, adding some definitions and reordering those. That's another that was authorized to advertise those changes in our zoning ordinance. Lastly, but not leastly, the jointure authorized the Bucks County Planning Commission to move forward on rewriting two parts of our zoning ordinances. One is the definitions part, and one is the sign ordinance. So those three have passed. There's still two other that will be sent back around to us. One is on billboards. That's very, very near, very near to completion, and that will be recirculated one more time. And there is one other one that I'm not finding right now, that, oh, the EV charging stations will be, will be sent around again to add, add the LI-OLI. So they're going to do one version, they're going to advertise one version without the LO, LI-OLI, and then after they do that, then they're going to circulate an amendment for adding EV charging stations in the LO, LI-OLI. It's a little confusing, but it's just going to expand, expand the ability to have EV charging stations throughout the jointure. Other than that, I would just, while I have, while I have the floor, say, there will be no sewer plant while I'm on the board.
Mr. Mac?
Yes, I have several things. This past Saturday, I attended the Juneteenth Celebration at Washington Crossing Park. It's the third annual Juneteenth Celebration honoring the contribution of Black soldiers during the American Revolution and Civil War. In case you don't know, Juneteenth is short for June 19th, which marks the day when federal troops arrived and galvested nearly two years after the Massapestion Proclamation, to tell the enslaved people there that they were free. And we heard from speakers who were thinking maybe that wasn't just a mistake, that they arrived that late. In any case, this historic legacy of Juneteenth, Juneteenth shows the value of never giving up hope in uncertain times, and these are uncertain times for sure. I also learned that the newly renovated African American Museum of Bucks County is expected to reopen this fall. It's right down the road from St. Mary's, and it's 32 acres. It had an old barn that they're renovating, so that would be something I know I'd like to see. It was, should be mentioned that February is Pride Month, which marks the anniversary of the 1961 Stonewall uprising in New York City. I was not at that uprising, but I lived in New York at that time. So I want to also mention that Newtown Township was the first township in Bucks County to pass an anti-discrimination ordinance that created a Human Relations Commission to protect the rights of all citizens of the Commonwealth, regardless of sexual orientation or perceived gender. And I also want to say, I will be attending the No Kings Protest on Saturday. Make America's Constitution King. This is my MAC hat, okay? So I hope everybody can attend between 12:00 and 3:00 PM, I think it is, 2:00 PM. It's down the road from the parking lot of Fitzgerald or Fitzpatrick, what's his name?
Patrick, but that's one of many that's happening. They're happening in Philadelphia.
They're happening all over, but this one, last time, there was a demonstration there. There were several hundred people. It was very well-attended. I just hope I don't get shot with a rubber bullet. Thank you very much.
I would also like to say, this was Mr. Mac that came up with our Love is Love resolution. Yes. Okay. Mr. Calabro?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Davis?
Nothing to report.
Moving on to our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda this evening, which just contains minutes and bills for the last meeting and the past month?
I'll make them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes?
No.
Oh, motion passes, four to one.
We still got the TD Bank, right?
Yes, we do.
Not for long.
Okay.
Not for long. Okay. Okay, uh, so moving on to reports of officials, there's no engineer's report tonight, so we'll pass it to our solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have zoning hearing board applications that will be heard on July third, two thousand twenty-five by the zoning hearing board. Uh, both applications are residential in nature, uh, one of which relief, the same relief that's being requested was previously granted but expired. So the applicant is returning to the zoning hearing board. Uh, the other one involves an addition and some other improvements on residential property in the R one district. Question for the board is whether it wishes to take a position on either of these applications.
Does anybody wish to take a position?
Hearing crickets, Madam Chair. That concludes our report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager brings us to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. General fund balance this evening is five million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Plan expirations before the board of no action required. This evening, we have Chief Hearn to give his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. May twenty twenty-five, police report. Police Department documented two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight calls for service for the month of May. Logged in just over eighteen thousand miles on our patrol fleet. For the month of May, we had fourteen arrests and clearances, one for assault, five for retail theft, three narcotics, one threat, one animal cruelty charge, one harassment, and two DUIs. There were eleven new cases referred to detectives for investigation with one crime scene processed. Some of those investigations included three assaults, two were school-related, three thefts, they were all retail, one fraud above cryptocurrency, three child line calls, and one natural death. There were sixty-one traffic crashes for the month, one hundred and seventy-one traffic citations were issued, and one hundred and forty warnings were issued. The truck enforcement, uh, task force enacted one detail at the Bypass and Lindenhurst, resulting in thirteen inspections, one citation, five warnings, two vehicles replaced out of service. Notable jobs and significant events for the month of May. May nineteenth, the police memorial was held at Saint Andrews honoring Bucks County law enforcement officers who were killed in line or during, in the performance of their duties. I want to thank the members of the public and the board who attended. Our accreditation review over our police department occurred May twenty-second and May twenty-third, determined if we were operating under the best practices. The commission will evaluate the report on June twenty-fourth. After twenty-five years of service, police officer Shane Vandermark has announced he will be retiring effective September twenty twenty-five, bringing the department to three vacancies. We have issued one conditional offer to a candidate in the police academy and two more are pending. On June fifth, crossing guard Rich Siller also retired. I want to thank him for his service over the years crossing the children, the sycamore and swamp. The position is currently open for anyone interested, obtain and submit an application at police headquarters. For public service announcements, this is for the public to pay attention to. Vehicle thefts, lock your cars, remove your key fobs, do not leave valuables inside your auto, and report any suspicious activity. If you receive a text message or an email for easy pass violations or append-on traffic violations saying your license or registration will be suspended or revoked, it's a scam. Delete it. Fraud's increasing continually on the elderly. If it's too good to be true, it probably is. Speak to your young children about posting inappropriate pictures online or texting alleged them pictures to friends. It's a violation of law. There's also a new law enacted called the Paul Miller Law, also known as the distracted driving law. No texting or driving with a phone. It's a primary offense. You will receive a warning for the first year, and after that, you will receive fines. That basically concludes my report for the month. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Chief, I always see, uh, the thefts at Ulta Beauty Store, and I just want to know, do we give them any advice on steps that they can take to kind of mitigate this? Is there anything they can do?
There are two stores within our shopping district that are continually problems for our jurisdiction responding to. They were both advised, their security management team were also advised of safeguards they can play, put in place as to the personal decision from their business model. We can't do nothing for them.
They don't seem very open to that, I guess. That's unfortunate.
Our theft reports continue to come in, ma'am.
I see, occasionally you do catch these thieves. Do you ever recover any of the four to six thousand dollars worth of merchandise they claim have been stolen?
Uh, yes, we do, and that dollar amount is pretty accurate based on the cost of some of the products within their stores.
I don't know, because I cased the joint out once, and I couldn't find anything over two hundred bucks in there, but.
Oh, there is.
There is. Even though once locked up, I don't know how they get away with four thousand dollars worth of stuff. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, as usual.
Madam Chair, we also have Chief Forsyth here this evening, uh, to review a memo that they had put together, uh, as it relates to the volunteer recruitment and retention program.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I presented a memo to Manager Lewis based on the Newtown Fire Association Volunteer Firefighter Program, the retention program. Uh, as you are aware, Act one seventy-two was passed in two thousand sixteen. It's been amended to Act ninety-one in two thousand twenty. This allows the municipality to give volunteer firefighters rebates on their property tax, their in- income tax, and that's why we're here tonight. We put together a additional, what it would cost the township to do this, has been presented to the board. Uh, there are three options. Option number one is the earned income tax rebate. Uh, we collect, I think it's one, one mil for, uh, the earned income tax. Unfortunately, we, we separate that. A half a mil goes to the school district, the other half stays to the township. So that's option number one. Option number two is the property tax credit under the same act. Um, this would be a property tax credit to the member of the volunteer fire department. Uh, it would be based on the township supervisor's opinion on what that percentage would be. It can go up to a hundred percent rebate. Uh, the third option, or the second option, I'm sorry, is a direct stipend paid by the township to the volunteer fire department, the members. Um, there has been some conversation with the labor attorney that recommends that that would not be a good option for the township to take. Uh, the third option would be to increase the annual budget to the Newtown Fire Association and allow them to come up with additional stipend for the volunteer firefighters, and that would, the funds would go directly to the fire association and be dispersed by them to the active members of the association. There are the three options. Uh, this has been available to the board. I would be more than happy to try to answer any questions. I think every step that we can take to retain the volunteers that we have, uh, in the letter I documented that there are only fourteen active firefighters. Uh, twelve of them reside in the township. So, um, uh, I stand behind, before you folks, before asking to hire more firefighters. I think this is important that we take every step we can to retain the volunteers that we have. So I would be more than happy to answer any questions and.
How much, uh, money do we give the Newtown Fire Association every year?
Uh, the township contributes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the fire association.
And, um, you know, I just don't know if volunteerism is really, uh, an issue that is really something that's maybe a dead end these days. And, uh, I know that because of that, we have hired new firefighters, paid firefighters, and maybe our money is best spent in hiring and making sure we keep those firefighters, who I understand actually saved a few lives this year.
That's correct.
And, um, so I don't know, maybe there's an option four that we just can't afford to support volunteerism when it's pretty certain, this has been going on for many years, and you've had a really difficult time getting volunteers. It's not just because you can't find them. There's a program they have to go through that's very grueling, and, and who wants to do that? Um, I don't think the amount of money that you're talking about here, five hundred dollars and stuff like that is, uh, really gonna help. Uh, and, but option number three is where we contribute even more than the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
How much are you thinking about in that option?
I think the plan we put together at, at that rate, if it was a twelve hundred dollar stipend or something like that, would be an additional twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars a year from the township to the fire association.
Oh, is that all?
It's all together.
Okay, thanks.
And this money would be dispersed from the fire association?
That's correct.
Not by the township?
Correct.
Is this money gonna be W twoed or ten ninety-nined?
Currently, the fire association has a stipend program that is ten ninety-nine at the end of the year to the volunteers that have earned enough to receive the ten ninety-nine. I think it's below six hundred dollars. They don't. Uh, most of our volunteers do receive over six hundred, but they do receive a ten ninety-nine from the fire association.
Okay. And, and again, this, this would be distributed from the Newtown Fire Association. The township would have no responsibility in paying the volunteer fire fighters these funds?
That is correct.
Okay, so the accounting, the justification, and maintaining who is going to a fire, who isn't going to a fire, is all gonna be done by the NFA?
That's correct. Currently, our, our records management system, we control all that, all the data that goes into it, so we collect the data for the fire association and we actually issue, uh, Chief Weaver and I do a certification to the members to certify whether they're, have met the requirements to receive the stipend program.
Okay, so you're talking about the two hundred and seventy-five thousand with the additional twenty-five thousand?
Uh, I'm, yes.
Okay. Does the township ever get any kind of verification of where this money's going? I, I remember years past, a supervisor had asked for receipts, and they could never be produced, so.
Well, we would be more than happy to give you receipts. Um, I can tell you that the fire association audit is conducted by the same accounting firm that completes the township audit, and you folks receive a copy of the audit at the end of every audit season, so.
Okay. Now, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, besides the stipend, what, what else is it used for? Just so we, we know.
It's the complete operation of the fire service, the fire department. Uh, it pays our utilities, it pays for the maintenance of the apparatus, it pays for, um, every, all the equipment we buy. Um, that's where the money goes for the complete operation of the fire association.
Okay, so no equipment is purchased by the township for the borough?
Uh, not till two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay. That's all I have.
What did you say about the borough?
I didn't say anything about the borough. I think Mr. Calabro had something to say about the borough.
And the borough also contributes two hundred and seventy-five thousand a year?
Uh, no, sir, they do not.
No, sir.
What, what do they contribute?
This year was, I think it was one ninety-one.
They contribute to the township, the, uh, the emergency services department. I think it's one ninety-one this year.
Does that include the workman's comp?
No, it does not.
No, it's separate.
The borough pays the workers' comp for the volunteer side of the firehouse.
Right.
Now, it, it isn't, doesn't the township cover them fifty percent of the time, technically?
Cover the borough?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And our fire department budget is approximately four million dollars?
Approximately, yes.
So where's the two million?
I, I'm not privy to that. That would be up to you folks to find out.
Either that, or maybe they should decide to open up their own ten million dollar firehouse. Since they never want to contribute to the township and pay us our fair share, maybe the borough should have their own fire department, which again would probably cost ten, twenty million dollars to build a firehouse and then to hire full-time firefighters. But it's just, uh, it just seems unfair that we cover them fifty percent of the time, but we don't get fifty percent. We don't even get twenty-five percent, ten percent. I mean, ten percent would be what, four hundred thousand? We're getting a hundred and ninety-one thousand. And they want to terminate the contract.
That's correct.
I, I just, I don't understand where their, where their thought pattern is. But it's again, our taxpayers paying for their services. I, I just don't think it's fair.
Also, might I add that, uh, the safer grant is going to be coming to an end soon? So we, the township being we, have to take over the payment of those firefighters that we, uh, hired, uh, under that grant? And when is that grant expiring?
Well, the grant is supposed to expire in March of two thousand twenty-seven. However, the funds, when the funds are totally paid to the township is when the grant will end. It was one point nine million dollars for the grant, and when that money has been exhausted through FEMA, uh, the grant will be expired. But the agreement is till March, we have until March of two thousand twenty-seven to spend one point nine million dollars.
So less than a year?
Yes.
Madam Chair, a question, if I may?
Yes.
I don't know if this is for the manager rather than the fire chief. Do we have an estimate of when that money may run out? Are we looking, do we have any kind of like?
I don't have anything on me right now.
Okay. Maybe something we should, I, I wouldn't mind knowing the NFO in the future, if you don't mind. Thank you.
I, I think we'd wanna, wanna know before the budget.
Exactly what I was thinking. If we're running out before March of twenty-seven, then we need to make sure it's budgeted for.
Yep.
And I'm curious what that's gonna be.
We were hoping they would come back to us, uh, you know, with something, but they haven't. So, uh, until that happens, uh, I just feel that we shouldn't include any kind of estimate from them because we have no idea what their plans are. They are well aware of what's going to happen to, uh, the insurance on their houses and things like that when they're not protected by a fire company. So, um, I would say that, uh, I don't think they're, I don't want to use the word stupid or foolhardy, but I know that they, know they have to get back to us sooner rather than later, or they're gonna be in deep trouble, so, uh, but we can't count on any numbers right now from them.
Well, you can't say that the fire department's not gonna respond. I mean, uh, I come from Brooklyn, and we used to say, when you're in trouble, call the fire department. They always come.
Well, there's certain parts of, that they will figure out what not to respond to. And of course, if there's anything devastating.
Emergency.
We have mutual aid, so things will be responded to in that fashion.
I think the purpose of tonight is try to retain the volunteers we have, and it's my job as the fire chief to provide the best service that I can to the community to make sure that everyone is safe.
And, Madam Chair, I had like three or four things I wanted to.
Absolutely.
Clarify, um, if, if I may, Chief.
Sure.
On the eligibility, on, on the first page, you talk about, um, duty crews, and how does that, how does that impact, uh, being eligible to get this?
We, we have a duty crew system that operates from ten P M. to six A M. in the morning. Um, starts ten o'clock on Sunday evening and goes till six o'clock on Friday morning. The weekends are covered by another stipend program.
Okay.
Um, that's done all by the volunteers. The career staff is here Monday through Sunday, uh, six A M. to six P M., but we rely totally on the volunteers from six P M. to six A M. The stipend program is set up in four-hour blocks. There are certain stipulations that we have to follow under the Fair Labor Standard Act because we can only pay a volunteer so much money because of our collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters. So there are a lot of things that we have to take into consideration. Um, quite honestly, I've been a volunteer for fifty years. I honestly, I, I give our volunteers a great deal of credit because they do a stipend program for four hours for twenty-five bucks. Um, to me, that's kind of an insult. You know, twenty-five dollars to put your life on the line?
Jump chair.
You know, but, but it helps. You know, but, but it helps. Every, every little bit has helped to retain the volunteers that we have. You know, when I started 50 years ago, there were 65 volunteer firefighters. Today, we have 14. We have to bridge that gap somewhere to make sure that we have the coverage. And I'll be quite honest with you, on Friday night at 6:00 PM, you know, my heart sinks down to my toes because I don't know whether I can put somebody on a fire truck or not. And that's not a good feeling to have as a fire chief when you have 20,000 people to protect. So every step that we can take to retain the 14 we have, I think we have to do it.
I'm certainly in favor of doing, doing something as a matter of how it's structured. Option, option 1A with the EIT?
Yes.
And action 1B with the property tax credits? Is there room in the legislation, do you know, if we could do an either/or?
You can do either/or, or you can do both.
Okay. So one, one person, if they don't own property in Newtown, they could take advantage of the EIT?
Correct.
Okay. Did I have one or two more questions? I do, I do want to do something to help the volunteers. Oh, I know what it was. We mentioned the $25,000. If I do my math correctly, and we give them, give 12 people $1,200, I think that's $14,400.
I, I kind of need a calculator when I'm trying to add, so you're probably right, yes.
I'm pretty good at math.
I take your word for it, Mr. Chair.
Right. That's all I have.
I think it's important that the money we donate, that we contribute to the fire association, that pays for the complete operation of the firehouse. So, you know, even the apparatus we use in the daytime, that, that is fire association equipment. So, I mean, I think, honestly, I think $275,000 is cheap for leasing a fire department.
At one time, it was over $300,000.
That's correct. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
That's all we have under our report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to our second round of public comment. Please come up, state your name and where you live.
My name's Donna Sardula, Wilshire Walk, 11 Kingsley. This is like kind of unorthodox, but I was just a giant, and I got you guys something. Can I approach? Is that all right? I know, it's so crazy. I thought, no, it's baby Ruths. I got you guys something. And John, I think this is kind of, it's for you. All right. All right.
To what do we owe this pleasure?
Okay, so, I know it sounds crazy. I'm here to speak about the vote that you guys are going to do. The one for the sewer plant, the sewer authority, right? The board seat, that's what we're, that's, you're going to be appointing someone to the sewer authority board, right? That's, that's the decision. That's why I'm here. I'm not here about the plant, because I heard you loud and clear.
Can you wait just a minute for that, since that's next on our agenda?
No, well, I want to talk to you before you make the, before you vote.
Sure.
So I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to maybe sway you guys. Okay, so you say that the sewer plant is dead. This is your chance to prove it. And I've provided each of you a baby Ruth bar, because this entire situation reminds me of a scene from that movie Caddyshack. Do you remember the movie Caddyshack? A woman drops an unwrapped baby Ruth into the country club pool, right? And what happens? People, they see it floating, and you know, we know what they think it is, right? And what happens? Pandemonium, chaos breaks out. People are angry, they're fleeing, they're getting out of that pool. We are at that exact same moment here. But I just bought it a giant, I know. But I'm going, I'm getting somewhere with this, guys.
I'm going to test this to see if it really flows.
But we're at the exact moment, and, but you just saw it. You saw these people, how angry they were. You see how they're angry. They don't want, they're disgusted by the thought of this plant, they don't want it. You guys are telling them that it's dead. I hope it's dead. I'm trusting you that you're not going to do anything to act 537, you're going to, you're going to keep that act 537 there. I trust you guys to do that, but you have another chance. And that is who you elect to the board tonight, right? Because there were, there were three candidates. There is Craig Deutsch, there is Keith Terry, and there was Mark Bjorkman. Those were the three. And when we talked to these three people, there was only one candidate who said, in terms of the sewer plant, only one of them said, "I'm against it." The other two, Craig and Keith, both said, "You know, I'm, I'm open, like, I'm, I'm willing to listen and, and hear both sides." The only one who said, "No, I'm, I'm, I'm against it," is, is Mark Bjorkman. He's the only one. And so, so I hear you guys. I believe that you're not going to change act 537, but I'd like you to add just a little bit more, just to, to really make me, to know, to know. So, yeah, you're holding this baby Ruth in the form of your vote for the sewer authority board seat. And I say, don't, please don't drop it in the pool. Prove it's dead and vote for the one candidate, the only one who's unequivocally stated he does not support the plant. And that's okay. That's it. That's the man. All right? Guys, choosing anyone else, and, and look, is, is Craig Deutsch here? Is he here? Is Keith Terry here? No. Okay. I would, nothing against them. I am sure they are lovely gentlemen, I really am. I have no doubt that they are awesome. But Mark has said, "I just don't, I don't support the plant," and I like that. I like that a lot. So, so choosing anyone else other than him, it's taking, it's taking this baby Ruth, right? And it's throwing it into the pool. And, and what's going to happen? I'm going to tell you what's going to happen, what we saw today. Anger, chaos, pandemonium, people do not want it, you know that? I don't have to keep telling you that. People are going to leave. The town is going to change. In ways, we don't want this, we just, we don't want the change. We've chosen this town for its charm, the quality of life, and it's going to become something different. Now, you guys also gave us the Wawa. You did. Like, that's enough. Like, we're done, right? Like, we're good. Right? We're good. Like, we, hey, we got the Wawa. We're good. So, so tonight, what I want you to do, after all of this, when you are presented with Craig, you are presented with Keith, and you are presented with Mark, I want you to do the right thing. I want you to vote for Mark, because if you don't vote for Mark, you're throwing this in and you're basically telling me that, yeah, yeah, we're, we're saying what we're saying about the act 537. I want you to see that. I want you to really prove it to us. That's it. I'm done. I hope it was at least a little entertaining. I tried. I know this is boring for you.
But you didn't complete the end of the story with Caddyshack.
Oh.
I believe Bill Murray ate the candy bar.
Um, so.
So the candy bar wasn't.
Shall we, shall we break into it and eat it together?
No, I'm just saying.
No, thanks.
All right.
Thank you for your point. Well, that's a hard act to follow. Good evening, Fran Haller, I live in Newtown Grant, and I know you're sick and tired of the topic, just bear with me. On February 12th, this board unanimously stated that you're against the building of the sewer treatment plant in Newtown Township. And it was at Mr. Calabro's suggestion, this board wrote a letter to the Newtown Sewer Authority voicing your objection to this project, and I have a copy of this letter here, dated February 14th, which in part stated, quote, "Please be advised that Newtown Township Board of Supervisors is vehemently opposed to the continued exploration, planning, and construction of a sewage treatment facility in Newtown Township. The board recognizes the concerns of the citizens that it represents and will make every effort to thwart the success of the project." The letter does go on to referring to the repercussions if this directive is ignored and encourages further discussion with Bucks County Water and Sewer regarding additional capacity and connection to the Nishamni Interceptor. Newtown residents that found out about this letter were very pleased. Now, there's a vacancy on the sewer authority board, and unfortunately, those concerned citizens of Newtown that were very pleased with your letter cannot elect someone to this position. As elected officials, you have become our voice, since it's your job to make this appointment. Apparently, there are three applicants for this position. I presume the three other candidates withdrew. I listened to the meeting online. Chairwoman, you had mentioned that there were six applicants. Of these three, only one, Mark Borkman, a qualified candidate, has echoed the sentiments of your letter and those of the concerned citizens of Newtown by unequivocally stating that he is against the proposed sewer treatment plant. Ms. Snyder, on February 12th, you said, quote, "It is my job as a supervisor to back our citizens. You have been heard," end quote. So, will this elected board truly back the Newtown citizens by appointing Mark Borkman to the sewer authority board? This is your opportunity to let your constituents know that, yes, you have been heard and we have your back. Thank you.
Phil, my comments tonight are going to be directed towards you. I heard you loud and clear last week, and I want to take you at your word. We're here tonight, obviously, most of us are here, because we honestly don't believe that this sewer issue is completely dead. You said it yourself, you want it to be dead. And I believe you have an opportunity tonight, and I believe it's in your hands, you have the power to do this tonight. We have Mark, who said he is absolutely opposed to this sewer plant. We know how some of these members are going to vote, and I think that you can prove to us tonight that you're a man of your word, that you want this to be dead. You don't want it to be a campaign issue, you don't want it to be an issue for Newtown. So I hope you make the right decision tonight, and I, I'm asking you to vote for Mark for the sewer authority. Thank you.
Valerie Mahalik, Newtown Walk. My question is to Supervisor Mack. Thank you for sending out a survey to the residents of Newtown to ask our opinion. You were the only one that asked what the voices of Newtown want. Will you be sharing what the voices of Newtown said?
Well, I will publish it on my website, www.johnmacknewtown.info.
So you're not going to read the results tonight that Mark Bjorkman was in the lead by 68%? And that Craig Deutsch, I believe, got, hold on, let me pull it up. I believe it was 12%. And the other gentleman, Keith, was not much higher than Craig. Craig got the lowest number of all of them. Those are the voices of Newtown. These voices have been ignored. It is insulting when the chairwoman speaks to a gentleman who comes up here and questions what he knows. $9 million was spent. It was spent without any of us being asked if we wanted our money to be spent on land that was condemned and then taken for $9 million, and our rates went up 47%. I'm tired of sitting in these meetings and for residents who take the time to come out of their busy schedules to be made to feel that they shouldn't be here and question. We question because how this all went down was not right. And at the sewer meeting, at the sewer meeting, which many cannot attend because it's during the day at 3:00 and it is not televised, it was the manager, the manager, not the six-member board. Actually, at that time, it was a five-member board because one person has resigned. It was the manager who said, "We failed with our lack of communication." Communication, that's what all of you are here to do. You are here to communicate to us, and then you're to listen to what it is that we want. So if you are listening, number one, we didn't want you to spend $9 million. Number two, we didn't want our rates to go up 47%. There were two 78-year-old women at one of the sewer meetings who said they were worried they can't pay their bill. This is why the public is here. We don't trust you. So if you want to earn our trust back, take Supervisor Mack's results and listen to the voices of Newtown. They matter.
Newtown Grant resident since 1999, and I'll keep it brief so we can get the meeting over with. But I've been coming to these meetings more frequently during 2020 on Zoom meetings when you guys had them because you couldn't have them in person. And every time, we have a group of people that come out to the meetings for different reasons, for Wawa, for the Toll Brothers development that's destroyed the land there and killed the farmer's land, developments being built on the Newtown bypass or the new daycare center that just got approved. Every single time, and I've brought this up many, many times, we as residents have very good data, information, we talk to you about why we don't want them, we tell you why we think that it's a bad idea, give you all the reasons why. And at the end of the day, as I've said, and other people have said here today in other meetings, that you're the only voice that we can hope and pray and speak to to hope that you'll be the voice for us on what we believe in. And it seems to me, again, with the passing in the April meeting with the daycare center on Durham Road, that local residents came out and said, "We don't want, it's going to cause traffic and problems and left and right turns." All this stuff came about, and what happened? Came and went through. Again, another project that nobody wants. It doesn't seem like the residents' voices matter to anybody. It doesn't seem like the residents' voices care. So to me, me personally, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but it seems like that no matter what I say, no matter what I preach, I can come up here and give you factual data and information that I've researched for a week, and it means nothing to anybody up here. It just seems like whatever business, whatever company, whatever they want to do is going to happen. We have the, you know, the water sewage plant, I know it's dead, it's not going to come here, whatever you guys wanted to tell us, that's fine, but we know something else is going to go there. We know it could possibly be a Skyrise Building Complex. We know that could be a possibility. You guys said some years ago, when that was coming about, you didn't want it. Why don't we do something to stop it now, so that doesn't happen? Change those zoning laws, work with the joint shirt, do something. It seems like that, oh, we waited too long, or we have other priorities. Nothing ever changes. And as a resident, I feel like my voice means nothing. So I don't know what to think about anything, being a Newtown resident, and I'm 35 years old, I have more important things I'd rather do than come in here every day worrying about my township getting destroyed and having it be Philadelphia or Street Road or whatever it is. So I hope you guys one day listen to what I have to say, not because I want to So I hope you guys one day listen to what I have to say, not because I wanted to say this, or not because I want to yell or scream at you guys, but as a young person, this is where I want to live, not in Philly, not in New Jersey, in Newtown. And I want to live here, grow here. I live with my mom. I don't want to have to move because the place turns into street road and I have to move to the Poconos to get what I thought was going to be Newtown. So thank you.
A little bit of good news. So my wife, Abby Leaf, is head of the Board of A Woman's Place, which is the only, as they quoted from the patch, the only domestic violence community benefit organization in Bucks County, which provides full range of programs and services to individuals experiencing domestic violence. And right now, Woman's Place is about to be 50. Next year will be their 50th year. And they've been struggling. Funding was sketchy, they were worried in the current climate that they weren't going to get enough funding just to continue. And then yesterday, they found out from the state and from the county, they were getting $6.1 million to build a new shelter. Spectacular. Yeah. So, and the grant is mainly coming from the state. Josh Shapiro kind of spearheaded it, but Steve Santissario, Perry Warren were pivotal in getting this. Also at the county level, Diane Marseglia and Bob Harvey were integral in getting this project through. So now they have the ability to build a brand-new, modern, sophisticated shelter for people who suffer from domestic violence. And, you know, and we talk a lot about, you know, violence in America and things like that. The scary, sad part is that the most common form of violence is silence and in the home, you know, perpetrated by the closest people to each other, you know? And there's a huge need to support people for domestic violence. And so I'm really grateful that, you know, government can work and we can come through and get things done and help our fellow neighbors who are desperately in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know where that will be built?
Sewer plant.
Do you know where that will be built, Ed?
The shelter?
Yes.
Where?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Not sure yet. Okay, thank you.
Nine million dollars. You can have.
Okay. If we could get on with our business, please. Thank you. We hear what you have to say. In my opinion, 107 people out of 20,000 is not indicative, and there's no scientific way of doing a survey. A survey, like, what are your parameters? I don't get it.
At least I talked to 100 people.
Can I just continue?
No.
Well, you're going to have to let me. So the other thing.
Please.
The other thing I want to say is that it doesn't matter if it's Craig Deutsch, Mark Borkman, or Keith Terry. They are not supervisors. Therefore, they have no power to change the will of the people, of what's going to be in there. They are simply there to fill a spot and really, it's a very boring process of bills lists and capital improvements to our sewer system, and that's it. We don't talk about anything that has anything to do with the sewer facility because that's dead. So there is not, excuse me, it's, so really, they have no, it doesn't matter who it is. They have no input on what's going to be built there. They're there to fill a spot, and they're who we think are, is going to be the right person to do that. That's simply it. They don't have any say on what's going to be built there. We know that they, none of them want it to be built. So no matter what you talked to, what you heard, they don't want it to be built. I don't know about Keith Terry, to tell you the truth, but I do know the other two don't. So you, don't bother arguing with me. I've talked to them, I've done my due diligence. And so now it's time to...
Madam Chair, if I may make a statement.
Please, go right ahead.
One of the phrases that always amaze me when people come out there and they say the phrase, "Do the right thing," which I don't think we intend coming here to do the wrong thing. We all think about what we want to do. What I get "do the right thing" is code for, is do what I want you to do. Because, well, and we take our constituents into account, we come up here to do the right thing after we've assessed everything that we've been given. We don't sit back and say, "Hey, you want to do the wrong thing today? Yeah, let's do the wrong thing. Let's, let's just not even appoint anyone." So when you come up there and you say, "Mr. Calabro, we hope you do the right thing." Well, I intend to do the right thing according to how I feel the right thing should be. But unless I do it your way, it's not the right thing. Now, one day, if any one of you sit up here and somebody comes up there to say, "Do the right thing," and you vote in the opposite direction, will you go home at night on your conscience saying, "Boy, did I do the right thing?" That's all that counts, is when you go home at night and can look yourself in the mirror and say, "Yeah, I did the right thing. I didn't agree with many of the people, but maybe I did the right thing." And I have to also say, 105, 103 people is not indicative of a scientific survey. I don't know where they were asked, who was asked, we never saw the questions of the survey. Every survey can be tilted to how you want that survey to be answered.
Can you not do that, sir? That's not allowed here. Please don't do that.
Go out and get the couple thousand signatures and we'll put it on the referendum. That's all you need. It just, you just don't go and say, "Put it on a referendum." There's a process. If you're willing to do the process, get it on the referendum, it can be done. But it's going to be done for something that is not going to be done. There's not going to be a sewer plant there. Now, again, and I also want to address the fact that I too live in Newtown Grant since 1988, original buyer, which it was all dirt, and it was farmland that was in litigation since the 70s. So when someone comes up here and says, "We're diminishing farmland, we're taking this away, we're taking that away." Newtown Grant, the largest development, was farmland that was in litigation since the 70s. So when you come up here and are proud to say, "I live in Newtown Grant, it's the biggest and the best," why don't you finish it by saying, "We won that through a lawsuit." And at that time, when I moved in here, all of Newtown hated us. We caused traffic, we caused this, we caused that. But when I called the tax office, I said, "Yeah, but you're getting a lot more taxes." So when you come up there, and I always say, "Know the history." You could come up there and say anything, you could make up stories left and right, but if you don't know the history, don't come up there and start blabbing, "I've lived here since so-and-so, it's the biggest and the best, it's this, that, and the other thing," when your property and probably all, every one of us live in a development that was once a farm. But since we're here, no one else can be here. No one else can build here. No one else can live here. And all the, all the, "Oh, street road and Levittown," there's not enough property developed on the bypass. There is nothing on the bypass. The largest parcel on the bypass is Upper Silver Lake Road, and guess what? We own it. And nothing can be done on that property unless the commissioners, Bucks County Commissioners approve it. Okay? Some more history. All the little pockets are like one little acre, this, so yeah, we're going to build a, maybe we could build a coals on the one acre of property and make the bypass, you know? I see people shaking their heads, and I see people saying, "Oh, traffic impact." I live where there's 1,751 homes since 1988, and I've never been backed up at a traffic light. So that whole traffic impact stuff, it goes out the window. People would have to leave their homes at the same time, go in the same direction, come back at the same time, at the same direction, for there to be any traffic impact. And I don't think in this township, we all work at the same place at the same time. So when the, when the traffic impact or stopping at stops, I don't like to stop at a stop sign every 50 feet. I agree with you. You don't have to give me a dirty look. I agree with you. But if people are asking us to keep the road safe, it's, it's, it's a traffic calming situation. It never was, but I hear somebody came up here and say, "Oh, just one person has to get killed on the road." That gentleman who said that 413 was not safe. Just one person. That's all that has to happen. And then they're going to say, "Where were the stop signs? Where were the blinking lights across the street?" So take this into consideration when, when we do do these things for the public. Instead, it's like, where's, you know, you're going to build a sewer plant. No, we're not. And pick the right person. We intend to. But if it's not your person, it's not the right person. Is that any way to look at who's going to be on that board that's automatically the wrong person? I really don't understand. Referendums on stuff that's not going to be passed, that's a good suggestion. Maybe there's a referendum on something else. Why don't you go do a referendum on the school board raising taxes every year?
Thanks for the lecture.
Okay, good. I had to listen to your lecture. Now it's my turn. Okay? Yes, yes, really. Ms. Mahalik running for supervisor who wants to make, wants to make a statement. No, 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 no.
No, no.
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 I'm disrespectful. Yes, I am. Absolutely.
If you are going to invoke my name...
I'm telling, I'm...
Mr. Calabro is talking. You will have your turn right after that.
And I don't appreciate you being disrespectful. You want to have a conversation, call me up here.
Are you running for supervisor? Are you running for supervisor? Are you making political statements?
Yes. I'm not making a political statement.
Yes, you are.
I am trying to look out for the best interests of the people, which is not what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
May I?
Yes.
I'm not doing the right thing because it's not according to you. That's all. Or not according to the, the stop sign, or not according to Mr. referendum.
Okay.
Oh, my God. You, you know what? It's just like, it's just like you can't, you can't handle the truth.
May I?
I call this meeting back to order. If we can get on with the business of hand, at hand, that would be greatly appreciated. You've all had your chance to speak. There is, we're done with public...
Public comment. Is the public comment over or we...
Yeah, we were moving on to...
Other business and a vote.
People wanted to interrupt that, to say their opinions first.
Right. And there's another chance for public to have their comments.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
I thank the three gentlemen who submitted their, their interest in being the Sewer, Sewer Authority, filling the seat of Sewer Authority. Mark had a great, had a great resume. Craig had a good resume, very good resume, and he also has the knowledge of Newtown by sitting on the Planning Commission for several years. He sits up here on a, two nights a week, two nights a month. And Craig has a very professional resume, and he knows the township. Mr. Terry, I don't know him. He does seem to have a good background on what the, how to run a Sewer Authority. The, the issue about the survey, there's no way that there could be a scientific survey that Mr. Man took. I appreciate, I appreciate...
No claim was made that it's scientific. I heard 100 people tell me their opinion. That's all.
John, let me finish.
Enough with the scientific...
But you cannot, you cannot depend on it. It's inaccurate.
I can depend upon what people tell me.
John, you'll have your turn. How about if you take your turn?
Can you let Mr. Fisher talk?
Please.
You'll have plenty of time, and I'm sure you'll use it.
I'll go after you.
Great. I really, I appreciate that you are getting the gauge of some group of people. It's, it's not the whole, the whole bang, shebang. It's not, it's not, I mean, how do I know that you didn't ask questions that led to a conclusion? And intentionally or unintentionally, that can happen. It skews the sample. So, having said all that, I think I know which way I'm going. It's the person with the right combination, the best combination, the best combination, in my, in my opinion, of resume and knowledge of the township. And I have talked to Craig, and I know that he will be a good board member.
May I say something about the survey? You're telling me that it was skewed? Basically, I put the three emails up on the survey from quoted each member, put them in alphabetical order of their last name, and then said, "Which of these would you recommend?" And the survey rotated them around, randomized, so the first person is not always the same one. So in that sense, it's not skewed, all right? It may not be scientific, but don't give me that bullshit that my surveys are skewed. It's not. I have a lot of experience doing surveys. And you want to take a look at it? You could have had a chance to take a look at it. I'll show you, I'll show it to you tomorrow. I'll read it on my blog.
There's the point. I didn't know about it. The people who wanted to know about it, knew about it.
I sent it out, I sent out an invitation to 600 of my email subscribers, who are Democrats, Republicans, and independents. It doesn't represent the whole damn township, no, but I sent it out to a lot of people. And I also disclosed who and which was it, Newtown versus Middletown, so I could take out of the survey the Middletown people. We should be listening to our Newtown residents. Such disdain for the residents' opinion. Your opinion doesn't count. You should have, you should have learned that tonight. Your opinion doesn't count. Only what's important to me counts. Me, me, me. That's all you heard tonight.
The issue is though, that I asked, I asked John Mack five days ago who he would support as the person, and he did not give me an answer. So therefore, I did not have his answer to, you know, get to the so-called three votes that we need. He didn't answer me. I asked him five days ago.
Why is that important? Did I tell you who I vote for? I don't always tell people who I vote for. Why should I do that? I shouldn't tell you.
Well, then we could have taken things into consideration that were of your concern. But having said that, Mr. Fisher, am I to conclude that you were putting Mr. Deutsch's name up in, for consideration?
Yes, I would nominate Craig Deutsch as the person...
It would require a motion of the Board to appoint a specific candidate. So, Madam Chair...
Do I have a motion to appoint Craig Deutsch as our replacement member of the Sewer Authority?
Yes, you do.
And I, I second that. That doesn't mean any more nominations can happen, so just please let it, let it take, it's not, it's not time. Please stop.
Well, public comment on, before we vote on the motion.
Well, you also have board comment before the public.
That's right. So we have one name put into nomination and seconded. Is there any other nominations that any of the board members would like to put up?
No, 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 no. You're not going to do it like that. We're going to make, we're going to, there's a motion. The motion is to appoint who, you, Mr. Deutsch.
And so we don't take that?
It was seconded. That is the only consideration right now before the Board. There's no taking of other nominations. If that happens to fail, the Board can then entertain a new motion. But right now, the motion is to appoint that individual.
Okay. Sorry for, that I didn't know. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the Board?
Yes. I have a discussion. I talked to Craig Deutsch and I talked to Mark Borkman, okay? I also asked Mr. Cherry to give me a call, and he never responded. All right? So not only do I talk to citizens, I talk to the candidates to find out exactly how they feel. to find out exactly how they feel. I got from Craig Deutsch, I didn't get a direct answer when I asked him how he felt. Would he be opposed to the sewer plant if it ever came up again for consideration? He wouldn't say no. He wouldn't say yes. He just hemmed and hawed. And I know that from his past experience, he's very pro-development. And he kept on talking to me about the need for sewage, for a doo-doo to go through, is how he expressed it. And so, from my conversation with him, I think he has in mind that he need, we need to do something to increase our sewage capacity. And I think he might be considering, if it ever came up, I'm not saying it will, but if it ever came up, he might be in favor of that. Number two is he sits on three different committees. And he sits on the planning commission, which involves this development that requires sewage. And so, he's going to have, I think, a little bit of a conflict of interest. I also asked him if he felt overextended. And of course, he said, no, he wasn't. But, you know, why not give somebody else a chance who is not? I appreciate that he's been a volunteer for many years and diligently did his work as a volunteer. But give me a break. Put somebody up there who hasn't served, who wants to serve. Otherwise, you're giving a message to our citizens that you can apply for things, but we're only gonna put our friends up there who have been around for a long time and who may have a conflict of interest.
Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I concur with Mr. Mack. I have nothing against Mr. Deutsch. He served our township for many years, for as long as I can remember, to be honest with you. I just think that Mr. Bjorkman is a better candidate for this seat 'cause I really believe, I want somebody in there that's absolutely emphatically gonna say, no sewer plant, Newtown Township.
Anybody else?
Yeah, like, it seems like the board is not, what can I say? Well-versed on the three candidates. I would like to table this nomination so that we have some more time to get the knowledge of the candidates, the three. And at the next meeting, since we'll have enough time to have reassessed and assessed who we want, we can make that decision at the next meeting.
Phil, I think that's a good idea. We used to have applicants...
I just made the motion to table. Do you wanna second it?
I'll second that. We used to have applicants come up before here at a work session, at a public work session, and interview them for their positions. Why don't we do that?
Madam Chair.
I'm all for works.
There's been a motion to table and a second. It'd be appropriate to entertain a vote on that motion at this point.
All right. Do we want a public comment first?
You can ask for it. I think it's more of a procedural motion since no decision is being made this evening. The motion to table is before the board. But I think that the board can vote on that motion at this point.
Point of order. What does that, to table it, what does that mean?
Moves it to the next meeting.
Moves it to the next. Table supersedes any...
I asked for a class...
Correct. And at that meeting, there must be a motion made to remove it from the table and then entertain the motion, the underlying motion that was made.
Yes.
So, can we do that at the same time? So, in other words, we're not having another meeting for a month?
Correct. July ninth will be the next meeting.
Next meeting, there'll be a motion to take it off the table.
Correct.
And then, we won't be able to vote?
Yes, you will be able to vote on it.
We won't be able to vote.
It'll be off the table and alive for your consideration.
Then you can make a motion to appoint.
Correct.
All right. All those in favor of tabling this nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Good. I can carry on with my survey against the more responses.
Motion passes four to one. So, this is tabled.
And it'll be on the agenda next week, next month.
I guess so. Be on the agenda next month. Also, Craig Deutsch is against this. But that doesn't matter at this point. So, I guess that's the end of our... Is there anything else procedurally we need to do, Mr. Solicitor?
Other business? Other business item, please?
Yeah, there's...
Yes.
This was item A under other business. If there's any other business, it would be appropriate to raise that at this time.
I have something of other business. May I discuss it?
Absolutely.
While we're discussing the sewer authority board, my opinion is that this board is not representative of Newtown Township versus the borough. There are three borough members and three township members. The township, as you have always pointed out, has twenty thousand people. The borough has, I don't know, two thousand? So, we outnumber them ten to one. Meanwhile, they have the same voting capacity on the sewer authority as the township. Secondly, a six-member board is ridiculous. We do not have a six-member board because you can have a three-to-three tie. And I do not know who can break the tie. Maybe it's Warren Gromley can break the tie at a supervisor's... Whatever. Mike, whatever his name is, somebody. I don't know what the rules are for this very mysterious sewer authority that tends to keep its meetings, you know, really not open to the public. But I would like to see, I know this is not the sewer authority, but maybe this is another letter we can send to the sewer authority, that they rearrange the board so that there's more representation of the township rather than equal representation with the township and the borough. Because I know we could've lost that vote if the other borough member came there and voted because I know all the three borough members were in favor of this. They made a big noise at the sewer authority. And that just concerns me going into the future here. Just my comment. Thank you.
Good job. John, you're absolutely right. I always think that it should be based on the proportion of the population. The only thing is, I don't know if we'd have to go through the sewer authority bylaws to make those changes. Kyle, do you know that?
Yeah, so, as I recall, this is a little bit before my time. The charter with the sewer authority was like something like twenty years or something? And was re-voted on...
It's way longer than that.
Yeah, it's a long time. And we had our opportunity, like 2010 timeframe, and we kept it the same. Three-three, even though the same argument came up back then.
I've had that same question. In a three-three tie, who breaks the tie? You're absolutely right. And that could happen. Just because it hasn't happened, doesn't mean it couldn't happen. I don't know if we pressure the sewer authority and to amend the bylaws before that. I do think that maybe we should have a four-to-three in favor of the township. You know, it's like anything else. Because the borough thinks they've been around here longer, they have more clout. But we have more people. And I think if you base it on population...
We should annex the borough, you know, the fifty-first state or something like that.
I'm not opposed to that either. I think that, you know, we could let them have their own governing body continue. But maybe they come under the auspices of the township. I mean, we already, any kind of major crime that happens in the borough, our police department takes care of it. We already have an arrangement with Wrightstown Township...
Even though they have their own police department?
Yeah, about three people, three policemen. I think when there's any kind of thing like a break-in or, we have the equipment to handle with fingerprints and so on, whereas they have to call us in to take care of it. So, I mean, these are things that Wrightstown realized it. And Wrightstown didn't have to create their own police department. They just incorporated our police department. It saved them a lot of money, but gained us money for covering that township. So, we're dealing with, I think, Ms. Schneider said, a bunch of stubborn people on that particular council that should understand, we don't wanna take anything away from them. We wanna give them assistance and get compensated for the assistance. And they could run their government the way they run their government. We won't, you know, come into conflict with that. But maybe there are things that we can do along with fire service, police service, and so on, of which they can compensate us. Paying us hypothetical five hundred thousand is cheaper than establishing a full-fledged police force, which will cost them... What's our police force budget?
It's roughly six, I think, I'll tell my head.
Yeah, six million? Do you realize what their tax base would have to be to raise six million for a police department?
If I might say, one of the reasons they said for the cancellation of the sewer, of the, I'm sorry, fire contract, was the fact that they wanted to make sure that their police were well taken care of. And that they thought that the sewer, that, I think, so... The fire contract took away money from the police, that they wanted to make sure they felt secure. And so, that's where, that's what they're looking at.
It, I don't know. I don't wanna say it doesn't make sense. But if they were to incorporate our police department and pay us, I think Wrightstown pays us almost a million dollars. I mean, if they were to pay us, we'll start off at five hundred thousand. They don't have to worry about a police department. They don't have to worry about paying for a police department. It's our police department. We could even call it Newtown Area Police Department if they're so concerned between borough and township. And just incorporate it that way. But, you know, I know that doesn't solve the sewer board issue. But it's part of it. It's part that we should have a larger say in, on the sewer board, the sewer authority board. Because, again, our population are more of the payers than the borough. Newtown Grant is more of a payer than the burrows. Like I said, seventeen hundred and fifty-one homes. Okay, they have two thousand homes. I mean, not much difference.
Okay, so, can I say that we want Mike Mandito to come to our next meeting? Is that what you indicated before, to talk about some of these various things? We want, I'll tell him the things that we've discussed. And I don't know if he needs to bring our, the sewer authority solicitor or to explain some things. I'm not exactly sure. Maybe, Mikey, you have an idea of how, who we have to ask for this to happen?
He's gonna say the exact same thing I said. That for a plant to go forward, it requires the amendment of that five thirty-seven.
Yes, of course. We know we're not doing that. I'm talking about, they wanna know, I don't know what they want.
There are other questions I would like to ask him, not just about that.
They wanna ask about the fact that, of the uneven amount that John and...
And about the time in which they have public meetings, about how long it takes them to put minutes up, about how long...
That you have to go to the sewer authority for. We have no...
Yeah, well, that's, we're talking about having Mike come here, and what are we gonna ask him? And I'm saying, these are the kinds of things I'd like to ask him. It's not just gonna be about that. What about the land? You mentioned that there was a court case where Mr. Worthington doesn't want that land back. Well, yeah, he's, there's a rumor. He bought the Stiefel Chase property. He goes build his shit over there. He doesn't need that property anymore. So, now, the sewer plant, the sewer authority, has this seventeen acres. What do they do with it? As far as I know about the eminent domain, if the original owner doesn't want that property, they cannot sell it to anybody else for twenty years.
Ten.
Ten, twenty, whatever. I won't be around. But they can donate the property to the township. And this is what I brought up at the sewer authority meeting. So, we also need somebody representing us who might make that argument in front of the sewer authority, if that's what we really would like. And I think that's what I would like to see.
Well, the sewer authority has loans out of nine million dollars. So, that would have to be paid.
University, what's the name of that university?
Holy Family?
Holy Family University wants to build lots of houses right adjacent to their property for their students.
And it's not for their students 'cause they haven't made any...
That's what I heard. It was for their students. I read about it in the patch. Maybe it was misinformation.
But it's not dorms. It's single-family homes, a lot of it.
Well, it didn't look like single-family homes. I saw the plans. It looked like apartment buildings to me. So, you know, whatever. They want two hundred and ninety or one hundred and ninety idiots. What is that?
Well, it's not gonna get through anywhere. So, I don't think it's...
Well, how are you making statements like that? Who are you? Are you in charge? What the hell?
No, I just don't think our planning commission or...
Yeah, with Craig Deutsch on, and he'll prove every...
All right. Can we just stay on what we're talking about and not go on all these...
I am talking about asking Mike Mandello. Is he Italian? Mandino. He's Italian, right? He's one of us. Yeah. So, he's gonna have to face some questions that we have. And that's kinda involved in one of them. I mean, how is he gonna handle the sewer capacity if he doesn't build a plant? What's the plan? That kinda stuff.
It's up to the chairperson to put it on the agenda if you'd like, so...
Yes, of course. And I will do that. I would just like to know who can answer the question of how long ago the amount of people from the borough and the township were? When was that agreement made?
I found out. It was 2010. And it's a fifty-year agreement.
So, that's only, so only since 2010 has there been three and three?
And it's gonna be three and three till 2060.
Is that an agreement?
Probably unless it's amended. And, again, if you need four votes to amend it, it's not likely to happen.
They're not gonna vote.
But the fifty-year life is a statutory life of a municipal authority. And don't, that's, that's in the statute. And that's what every authority has when it starts out. Then, when the fifty years ends, they renew the deed of trust or whatever document establishes the authority. And that they proceed from fifty years to fifty years.
I knew you'd have the answer to that question. It's been burning over here, but I put it on the back burner until I wanted to know. It was municipal planning.
Yeah, it's in the Municipality Authorities Act, which is not the MPC or the sometimes called Township Code. It's a separate standalone statute that governs municipal authorities.
Thank you.
So, do you suggest we send a letter to the sewer authority, Mike Mandito and Jessica Vanderkamp, our attorney, both? Because they both might have to answer these questions.
That's strictly a board decision as to whether to, who, whether to invite somebody to your meeting and who exactly to invite.
Okay, so, I have to find out who can answer these questions, obviously. But you just answered the one.
I used to represent municipal authorities.
Got you. All right. Well, we'll see what we can do. And we'll try our best to get on the agenda.
On a board of six, what's the quorum?
Four.
Four?
Yeah. And you need four affirmative votes to take action.
Now, not to be tricky or anything, but if our three members never show up, what can they pass?
Say that again?
Yes, the Newtown...
If our three, if our three members never show up...
They can't pay any bills.
There's no quorum.
That's not going to work out too long.
They can't pay bills. They can't. What's it going to take for them to listen to us? If we stonewall the sewer authority board, does that give us any more clout? Just a thought.
Well, you got to convince our other two appointees to do that.
What's that?
You have to convince our other two appointees that are sitting on it to do that.
Well, would they rather?
I'm just saying.
I know.
Our other two? We only have one.
Would they rather stonewall it or would they rather them pass stuff in their favor?
It's hard because only the representatives of the township show up. The people from the borough hardly ever have a full three there. So.
Well, then technically, in a way, they're stonewalling us.
No, there's always four.
But you need four. You need all four votes. If that one borough resident, one borough member doesn't want to vote with our three township members, nothing will get done.
So three, when there's a quorum of four, you still need four votes, Mr. Solicitor?
I am actively looking that up, Mr. Mack.
When a six-member board, we need half plus one.
Is it a majority of a quorum or is it a majority of the entire board? I'm looking that up.
Well, when we have only three members, if only three members, it has to be all affirmative of the three.
Correct. Because the second-class Township Code specifically says that to take affirmative action, you must have a majority of the entire board, not just a majority of a quorum.
Right.
Other types of governments, boroughs, for instance, I believe, don't need a majority of the entire council. They just need a majority of the quorum. So I'm looking that up in the Municipality Authorities Act, and I'll see if I can get you an answer.
Well, I believe it's half plus one. So we need three plus one.
Right. But it depends who shows up at a meeting. If only five members show up at a meeting, you have a quorum. But are do will three vote affirmative votes out of the five attending allow you to take action? Or do you need to have four votes for everything?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to find that out.
I see. I think we need four votes. But yes, please find out.
I think that's true, but I'm trying to.
We haven't come up. A lot of this, none of this has really come up. So we haven't had, like I say, the three township members always show up. And except for now, when we don't have an empty position. So we haven't been in that situation. Okay. So we'll give instructions over there. I'll call over there and see what we can do for the next meeting here. And at that time, we will have we'll discuss who you want here as far as do you want Craig here to speak or do you want to speak to him privately? Or tell me how you want to do it. And I'll make sure it gets done.
In between televised meetings, we do have a work.
In between televised meetings, we do have what's called a work session, which we used to have back in the old days. And maybe at this work session, we could ask the all three gentlemen to come and sit and, you know, say what they say what they have to say.
I would be in favor of that.
It could be the only thing on the agenda for that night. It could be just interviewing the candidates for the sewer authority board.
What do you think about doing it an hour before meeting time, the next meeting? Would that be sufficient? Or do you want to?
We could, but then we run into time constraints. I mean, are we going to give everyone equal equal time to state their case? I mean, you know, somebody always goes longer than the other per that doesn't mean the person that goes the longest was the best qualified or so on. So I don't know. I think to be fair, maybe we do it at the work session. And we could have the work session start at six if that if that's the case. I don't know.
Click conflicting meetings sometime.
And also, when we do have a work session, we might have a couple of things that we could have.
Oh, we could. Yeah, we could have a few things on there.
Yeah. All right.
I kind of miss those work sessions. They were fun.
All right. All that being said, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Now,
All right. Hello, I'm Mark Bjorkman. I think you've been talking about me tonight. I just want to thank Mr. John Mack, who took the only survey that really mattered. He talked to me for 35 minutes about my views on the sewer authority. None of the other supervisors ever called me. That's my comment.
Thanks. We did see your resume, however, and your letter.
And thank you for entertaining just another comment. I'll be quick. Donna Salvucci, Middletown Township's phone point. And it's been a long process, I know, to get us from from finding out about everything that was going on with the with the sewer plant to where we are now and to have you guys write the letter and to support us. And we appreciate we've gotten there. But there is, you know, there there has been some transparency issue. And unfortunately, I think you're still feeling the effects of that. And so are we. And to say that this appointment isn't really that important, it just does mundane work, that's not what was said in the last meeting. There was real almost chaotic panic about an open position in the last meeting here. The sewer authority actually voted to shut down the work at the sewer plant. They have real power. And it's not just mundane work that they do. I'm sure they do very important work. And a lot of what they do is behind closed doors, and that scares us. Whatever happens in the executive functioning and executive meeting is not out in the sunshine in the sunshine. We don't know what happens. And that's probably how a lot of this came to be. And we didn't know about it in a timely fashion. So we will just ask that, remember, this is a dynamic process. We're not just thinking about the power plant that's not going to happen now. That land right now can't be accessed. It's, you know, it's an illegal process. That may go on for months, from what I understand, or even longer. But we're thinking about a person who's going to think about whether sewer plants are going to be rightfully placed, environmentally placed, or even necessary for years to come. Not just now. We're talking about a timeline. So I'll just close on that. And thank you and good night.
Good night and good luck.